Thanks for stopping by Minnesota Black Robe Regiment. As always, make sure you're subscribed and that you're checking out the bell icon down there. And then like, comment, and share. I want to introduce to you today two people, Jessie and Angie. They have become good friends. And Angie in particular has taken it upon her, and I'm not taking away from Jessie. Jessie is the bronze, the brawn of the two. Angie is the beauty and the voice. And Jessie, you know that's true. But I want you to meet Jessie and Angie. In particular, I want you to meet Angie. Angie is, she has been instrumental in organizing grassroots call to action in the Owatonna Public School District. And the other day, she put out an invite for as many patriots as she could muster to show up at the school board meeting that took place on Monday night, June 28th. I took up her invite and I decided to go and be an observer. And while Angie didn't speak, she has inspired others to speak. And her desire to get other people to get involved is contagious. There are 27 to 30 people who showed up at the school board meeting. I would dare say it's probably been a very long time since anyone has shown up at one of these school board meetings, at least in those numbers, and especially over something like what they went to talk about. You see, the Owatonna School District is looking at hiring and instituting a equity coordinator. And along with that equity coordinator, they're teaching critical race theory and critical theory in general to school district leaders. And that, and you'll see that in this video. There were about five speakers. One of them was for the introduction of critical race theory into the school district. She did a phenomenal job of laying out her point and sharing her personal testimony of what was going on and why she thought it was necessary. There's also four other people who spoke, and they all did a very fine job of communicating their point. What I want people to do is I want you to see that even in a school district like Owatonna, Owatonna, Minnesota is not large, but school districts are by and large the backbone of political governmental leadership, if you will. The school board members are elected servants, just like a mayor or a sheriff or a city council or a county commission would be. They are elected by the people to represent the people and do what the people will. Not, they're not elected to go up there and do what they want. They're elected to go up there and institute the will of the people, the will of the electorate. And the people of the Owatonna School District went to remind the Owatonna School Board and the school board members of that. And so I want you to understand, as I went predominantly as an observer, there are two situations that arose during the meeting where I did speak out. Both of them, I believe, to be very, it was pertinent, it was pertinent time for me to speak. And one of those situations is not going to be comfortable for some of you, and I completely understand that. But elected servants need to be reminded that they're elected servants. And that public meetings where the people are there to ask questions, they don't get to shut them down. And questions being asked as those things arise is the place for the public to speak. You don't get to relegate people to three minutes during a public comments section and then go on and address whatever's on the agenda and then expect that people aren't going to have questions to ask, especially when those agenda items are going to be voted on. And you're going to see that play out. And I'm saying this ahead of time because I want you to understand, it's going to seem very curt. And the people were upset, and rightly so. The people of the Owatonna School District who showed up, these 27, 30-some people who were there, were very upset, very upset, and rightly so. Because school board members, just like almost every other elected position, have forgotten that they're not the bosses. They've forgotten that they're not in charge. And they need to be reminded of that from time to time. And so I would encourage you to watch, and I would encourage you to be encouraged, and then take what you see here back to wherever you are at that grassroots level and begin to take action. Begin to stand up and do what needs to be done to take back these positions. And what I mean, take them back, I don't mean necessarily throwing the bums out on their heads. What I mean is go back there and remind them, whatever level it's at, that they work for you and they work at your discretion and they work at your leisure. And if they're not going to treat you with the respect you deserve as their employers, then they can be removed from office. Simple enough. And many of you know that. I'm not here for the rah rah rah. I'm not here to do cheerleading for patriots. I am here exclusively to call people to action, to stand up, to be stirred up, and do what Angie and her friends have done. I am in absolute awe of what Angie and her friends have done in Owatonna. And I would commend them to you. Be like them.
Thank you. So let's go. I'm on a public forum, and just to make sure that we have created the best opportunity for everybody that came to speak, I have four cards, and I'll just, I'll read these off real quick. Marlene, Jamie, April, and Anthony. If anybody else would like to make a comment during this.
Jennifer, did you want to speak tonight?
Sure. There's a card right down here at the end, next to Sarah. If you'd please fill that out and we'll gather that up from you before you leave. Marlene, you turned your card in first. Please come up to the table here and you have to.
Right after doing a little deliberation, if you can, because we want to make sure that we get to the recording for the board meetings as well. I want to make sure we can get it.
Marlene, the microphone.
I've been giving this critical race theory, awful lot of talk and a lot of research. And I get an absolutely fantastic magazine. It's called the New America, best magazine in the entire country. And this issue is all about white people. And I think if every parent and grandparent could read this, they'd be pulling kids out in the roads. And I understand, after a year of online learning, a lot of people kind of caught on to what's going on, and a lot of them are never sending their kids out into the public. Everyone just continue with online, and there's lots of options for online. And I've been thinking about, if you all really believe this critical race theory stuff, everyone up here is white, you need to resign. Because if we are the oppressors and everyone else is oppressed by white people, then we need to just clear the way and let them take our spots. Because we don't want to be oppressors any longer. But anyway, I want to read you what my magazine has to say. "The exclusive purpose of critical race therapy is the disparaging of Western culture and the canceling of Western creators, thinkers, and achievers, and the projecting onto the maudlin white people the racist burden of inescapable guilt for all the evils of the world going back to the beginning of time. And as I have told you before, I will never apologize for my skin color, nor that of my ancestors. This country is so precious. Fifty percent of people want to be here, so we just cannot be all that bad." And there's some more things in here that I thought were very, the whole magazine was interesting, but there's a merit system, I understand. And I'm just going to read it together. "Also, in Oregon, the state legislature passed a resolution allowing newer teachers to be retained over the senior ones. If newer teachers have more diversity training, which of course they would, the bill requires the public schools use merit-based systems when making staff reductions. Unless the system interferes with the school's differential, some districts who plan education staff reductions must retain employees with less seniority if they have more merit than senior employees. And merit is defined as having taken anti-bias in other forms of diversity training." And then it talks about the Rochester Public School System in Minnesota. "Voted unanimously that the phrase 'black lives matter' and other slogans dear to the critical race theory movement are privileged official government speech, which means they are exempt from challenge by dissenting opinion, ordinarily protected by the First Amendment. Among the other phrases so designated are 'all are welcome here,' indigenous lives matter, stop Asian hate, and brown lives matter. Simply decreeing speech to be government speech and therefore speech cannot be criticized or challenged is Orwellian and not likely to pass the constitutional muster in our court of law. Another resolution was passed through school messaging deemed undesirable by the Rochester Public Schools." And I know Owatonna's always on board for whatever's the very latest and greatest, and whenever I see one of your columns in the paper, Mr. Elstad, I can see all the buzzwords to all of this critical race stuff. And I just can't even hardly, I don't read it. I can't stand it. Because I know you're just into it, right up to your eyeballs. But I want to read you an article here too, also about another town in Minnesota. "When Minnesota mother Aunt Marie Calgario found out that her underage son had been taken to get sex change surgery by government school officials without her permission, she was furious and heartbroken at the same time. Calgario's outrage resulted in her filing a lawsuit against the St. Louis County School District in 2016. Not only was I robbed of the opportunity to help my son make good decisions, but I also feel he was robbed of a key advocate in his life, his mother. Calgario told reporters about the horrific ordeal. I was not consulted or informed about this transgender transition in any way. Unfortunately for Calgario and her son, however, all the lawsuits in the world will never undo the surgical castration and hormone treatments the child was subjected to by government educators and the crap doctors. Studies show almost all children tricked into believing they're transgender end up perfectly normal in adulthood. Calgario's sterilized and mutilated son will not get the chance to find out." If this happened to my kid, you better believe, guns would be blazing. I'd be in here and I wouldn't put up with it. This is horrible. And this whole magazine goes on, if you'd spend less time teaching all the garbage and get down to where you're teaching them how to really have skills to get them through life, like this common core math, two plus two does not equal five. But you let it go. If it's a small number, you can be off by a small amount. If it's a big number, you can be off by more. We're raising our generation that is so dumb-dumb, it's now a national emergency. And this is all what we're paying for through public schools, and we're paying dearly for this mess with our kids. I think it's shameful. And I'm just as disgusted as I possibly can be, but I would suggest, why don't you subscribe to this magazine and learn what you're doing to our kids? We need local control, and this has got to go. We need our kids to come out so they can read a clock face, not just a digital clock. I have talked to people at work and they said, when the kid goes on break, they say, where does the hands on the clock have to be? They can't read a clock face and they're old enough to be working at IV.
Here's the home stretch here, Marlene. Three minutes.
Pitiful, pitiful. But anyway, I could go on and on. Every article in here is outstanding. And to think that two school districts in Minnesota were named in here. And Owatonna's always on the cutting edge of everything. And I've got one more thing to say.
Well, actually, you used your three minutes. Thank you, Bill.
I've got a lot more I could say.
Up next would be Jamie.
Jamie, welcome.
Glad you're here.
Thank you. Thank you all for listening. So I attended the Raise Our Standards event in Owatonna on June 8th at the Owatonna Country Club, because I have some concerns about the resistance of critical race theory being taught in Owatonna schools. At this event, Deborah Bandle spoke. She identified herself as a school board member, and she informed the audience that she's been told by other school board members to be quiet, to go along with the group, and that her vote doesn't count when she's voting against CRT. She also stated that the school board is being controlled by Mr. Elstad. I find that hard to believe. I bring this up for a couple of reasons. Owatonna High School has experienced three race riots in 10 years in an environment where CRT wasn't being discussed, or any other related topic related to positive race relations for that matter. My son graduated from Owatonna High School in 2020, and I do need to note, my kids are black. My son was in the gym. My son was treated as less than a person and has been treated as less than a person since he enrolled in Owatonna schools. That's important. Since the last race riot, he expressed significant reforms to his educational experience since the last race riot, including the willingness of other students to engage in discussions of race and culture. Most of my son's education in black history came from home, not from school. And none of his white friends were educated in anything race-related other than basic topics of the broad scope of slavery and Martin Luther King Jr. Ms. Bandle's comments caused me great concern. It makes me question what's really going on behind closed doors at the school board. It makes me lose trust in those who are making decisions for the school district. It makes me wonder why she identifies as a victim of this institution. It also makes me question whether or not Ms. Bandle is honest and a fair representative at the Owatonna School District, that she would so publicly throw the other school board members under the bus and further fuel the divisions and conspiracies, which is the thing she reportedly believes critical race theory would do. CRT is a necessity in Owatonna public schools.
Ladies and gentlemen, let her speak. She has an opportunity to speak for three minutes.
"The best predictor of future behavior is past behavior unless there is a significant intervention. If CRT isn't taught in Owatonna schools, the board should just prepare for the same past behavior to continue. And I must ask, how many more race riots are necessary before a significant intervention?" Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Up next is April.
Oh.
April, welcome.
Thank you. I welcome this opportunity to speak to all of you. I would also like to talk about why CRT is not the answer. First of all, I'd like to address her concerns. I understand there is racism. I do not believe for one second that Owatonna is systemically racist. We have racist people here that we all need to hold accountable. But this school district, this town is not systemically and above just racist. She is right. We do need to talk about the race issue that we have in this town and how it's dealt with. And she is right. Her children were not taken care of, and that is on the adults, especially these in this room, not our children. Our children do not need to be taught to hate each other. Okay? Critical race theory is what divides Owatonna. It does not bring Owatanans like her and her family to want to stay here. There are plenty of families that are leaving Owatonna. I love Owatonna. I was not born and bred here, but my husband was. I've been married for 25 years to that man, and I've raised three children in this school district, in the public school systems. Okay? I love Owatonna and each and every person that is in it. Okay? I love the child that is just born to every adult. Okay? I, critical race theory is not the answer. Critical race theory teaches that this country was founded on racism, growing to become the successful nation that we are today is only because of racism. That is not a true statement. So race, and today, to say that that is the fundamental that defines us as a country, as Owatonna, I'm not even going to say a country. I'm going to say Owatonna. It does not define us. Hard work defines us. Teaching our children that they can be anything that they want to be can and does define our children. Okay? I, as, it doesn't, the critical race theory should not be taught. Okay? And it's not critical race theory, it's critical theory. Because critical theory includes a lot of things, and this subject is just racism. Okay? And it needs to be talked about, and it needs to be dealt with, but it's not on our children. It is on us as adults to teach them. How are we reaching out to the adults to make sure that they are doing what they are supposed to be doing to keep this Owatonna community not divided? CRT is not the answer. So, there we go.
April, thank you. Up next is Anthony. And Anthony, we didn't get your last name. Can I get your last name?
Can I? It's H E R N A M D.
Thank you. Anthony, you've got three minutes. We're glad you're here. Thank you.
God bless everyone. First is sex education. I do not think it should be taught in schools. It's something that made myself awkward. I went to Old China High School, graduated from there in 88. I never thought it should've been taught when I was learning it. It made me feel really uncomfortable. I think it's a waste of tax dollars, for one thing. And the things that I hear now, and I haven't doubted that yet, but I'm, it could be rumors, I don't know, but it's going to get worse and worse. And that just gives me stop. But we want to teach even younger children, which I have a nine-year-old and a five-year-old, and we homeschool. And there's a reason why we do that. And I used to have great faith in public schooling, especially in Owatonna. I thought Owatonna was one of the best school districts in that state. We have many teachers here who work for them, I've got some other teachers. And I just think now I'm turning the other way, and I don't like that. And I'm from Owatonna, born and raised, and I just, the things I'm hearing and the things that I think are about to come, I hope to God that they don't, because it's just kind of frightening. It's going to be awkward for a lot of children. I think people should think that through. The kids nowadays, I mean, they're going to learn in their life. They should be learning at home. Unfortunately, it's not going to be, I mean, parents are going to do that. We're going to teach our children, like we should the Lord first, and it should follow in with the Bible, and then from there move on, you know, to academics. But I just really think that, I believe, we should really take a good, closer look at what we're about to teach our children, and especially our teenagers and them when they go on. And I think it kind of arms them with more ammunition to perhaps than to not. I mean, it just, I don't know, it's really troubling, and that's why I came in. I have to do with CRT, which I think is a joke, and that's a shock, but, and coming from me, I just think it's a huge waste of time. I think it's ridiculous. Just the things I hear like COVID-19, which I still enjoy, and I still watch it on my phone, because I'm not a fan of these certain people doing things, and not anyone for the anthem, which I think is lame, but I just think that, you know, this whole thing's going too far, and like, you know, don't be white. It's a joke, you know? It's like, you know, be whoever you're going to be, whatever race you are. And I don't think they should be teaching that garbage in school either. I think it's a huge waste of time, and coming from someone like me, who had grown up in this town, who are like one of the few minorities here, and dealt with a lot of racism, and like other people I mentioned, it's certain people, and that's everywhere you go, it's going to be that way. It's not just Owatonna. I still think it's a great town. I think we have a great chance of, you know, we can, it's one of the best towns. I've always said that. That's why I moved away in Washington, but I mean, I was into art school for about four and a half years. And that was okay. Actually, I was younger then, right? Now, I don't want to do this town anyway, but, you know, I feel comfortable here. And to have this stuff, you know, it's all over the country, but especially when it gets to your hometown, I just don't really like hearing about it. And this whole thing with the, you know, black lives matter too, it's a bunch of garbage too, and I'm a minority. I think people are just hippie now, you know? Just get a bunch of scissors, actually, just, you know, man out. We are who we are. Things are going to happen, but don't just hippie all to things because, you know, just like the George Floyd tragedy. But we'll see if that's got a little known, or it's on statute. It's like, yes, it's money, but it's statute law. It was always sad what happened. I didn't agree with it. I think Shabba, you know, should've gotten some time for what he did and he did. And the thing is, I just don't agree with all this stuff. It's just like, kind of like a green card for a lot of people to like get away with a lot of things. How to be abused, and we support our law enforcement strongly, and I wish the rest of the country would do the same. It's just like, the travesty, it just, I was just wondering, we're letting it out, but my kids are still in it, and I just don't want it to be in the schools. I'll part with that. Thank you.
Anthony, thank you. Next question tonight is Jennifer. Jennifer, welcome. Glad you're here.
Some of you know that I'm Jennifer Fisher, and for both of you that don't, I have been heavily involved in the community in a lot of different ways. My husband, along with his siblings, have all been born and raised here. We come from a hardworking, farming family with solid Christian roots, ethics, morals. I spent much of the 26 years that I've lived here heavily involved in this community and the schools. And somebody we even recognize in the former communities and most communities and that type of thing. The bottom line is to work for what's best for our students and our youth in the educational arena, I think. Together, we currently, my husband and I have four years of children that have gone through the school system. And now we also have our grandchildren also attending at the same time through the Owatonna schools. I believe you agree that that is the length, the amount of time and involvement connecting us to this school district. I'm here for many reasons, but to sharpen the focus even more today, I challenge the school board and administration to ask themselves, as you cautiously move forward, most people can't read just like this. I pull that often, anyway. But as you cautiously move forward, ask yourself two primary questions. I believe that there's a lot of other conversation going on that is very complete, and I'm not going to expand upon that, but I do want to have you address this and ask yourselves this when you're in your working moments, your minutes by yourselves, and you're thinking about what was said today, reflecting upon what you're hearing from the community. One is, how, with making a decision obviously not supported by the community, how for aid interjective to increase student numbers in attempts to recapture the lost numbers and revenue? I've watched what your numbers are doing. I've watched what your revenue's been doing. We don't want to divide our community even more. We don't want to chase the people away that are considering our community and our education that in the last four years has been one that you've been proud of, that we've all been proud of. And we don't want to keep on tarnishing that. And that, there's been a lot of dispenion that's been going on for a long time, and I think a lot of people would agree with that. The second question that I think that you should ask yourself, or I challenge you to ask yourself, as you go forward and keep working, why would you yet again want to go against the majority of the community's wishes as you're trying to achieve other goals? I mean, these are things to heavily consider. That's something that, and I've worked with you on committees, that we've also considered. Without reflecting deeply upon these two questions, it would not serve the mission, the purpose statement, and goals of this school district. In fact, it's counterproductive. Truly, if you do not want to work in the best interest of all students and families, lessening rather than increasing the level of dispenion or narrowing the gap of adversity would truly work more efficiently toward any of the goals that you're trying to achieve. And that's really the bottom line here. Nobody's come here, none of us are on Facebook or collectively gathering into groups to war against you. And if that's a feeling that you have, I'm not going to apologize for that because that's not my decision, that's not my action. I want to clarify with all of you, from an objective point of view, if we are truly going to be the best, that every one of you have put in print, that you've put on your websites, that you've sent to me at different meetings, then we need to work at, how can we obtain these goals and achieve betterment? And that would be to bring this community closer together. So those two questions that I posed to you, I challenge you, keep them on your docket, keep them on your desk, keep them in your notebooks when you're going to do these working sessions, that you think very sincerely about those, because we are not going away. We're 26,000 strong, and we all have one real common thing here that doesn't differ from any of you. We live here, we want to live here, we have our children going to school here, and we want them to go to school here. So let's work together. And I'm not using my three minutes. That also is unheard of.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Elstad or members of the administrative team with regard to what appeared in your administrative reports?
Yes.
And I'm not using my three minutes. That also is unheard of.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Elstad or members of the administrative team with regard to what appeared in your administrative board?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I was wondering what the title of the book that will be studied by district leaders on equity-focused schools? But the title, so I was just wondering what the area is. Who are the district leaders?
So district leaders would be building principals, um, or directors and any other, um, associate technology director, food service director. And really that book is focused on all sorts of equity, including the sister community status, um, race certainly is within that. But all here is because our goal is always to look at, how do we best serve all of our students? Because in public education, all come to our doors. We want to make sure that we're best equipped to serve all of our students and their needs. Because to me, the definition of equity is giving each student what they need to be successful. And so that book lists out that.
That's, that's not equity. That's not equity. That's equality.
Ladies and gentlemen, the opportunity for public forum is in.
This is a public forum and the, and the people have a right to ask questions. Completely ignored that board member.
The, the title of the book is being pulled up. Sorry.
Are you referencing the one that was the, what we call theory strategies, which is curriculum for equity and make sure that it's culturally responsive and, you know? What report are you referencing that might be easier for me?
District Director of Learning and Teaching, what was the name of that book?
Oh, it could be, it could be in the report. I just wanted to know what your. A meeting I went to? Hmm, okay. Yeah, that actually is in Teaching and Learning. After you, Michelle Crowder, Director of Teaching and Learning is here. Michelle, you wanted to comment on that?
So it's called The Five Practices for Equity-Focused Leadership and it's in Minnesota Department of Education.
Thank you. Sorry I bumped into your right hand.
Sorry, I wasn't sure about that. What are the five points to that?
I'm going to pause the, the conversation that's happening in the room. This is a board meeting that is for the interaction between the board members.
Oh, you're public servants. You're public servants and these people elected you and when they ask questions, you answer them. You don't silence the public. Do not silence your public. No, you are. You are silencing them.
I hope that what you just saw is an encouragement to you, even, even the part that's a little bit more hostile. And what I want to add now here at the end is I did actually have a conversation with the gentleman who I had that engagement with and it was a very pleasant conversation. He approached me and he, he was conciliatory and said, look, you're right, the people have a right to speak. And so we had a, a back and forth. It wasn't 100% amiable in the sense that we weren't 100% on board with one another's, one another's agenda, but it made him approach me. We introduced each other, we shook hands and said, hey, everything's cool. And that's the way it can be. You can have these moments of debate, as brief as they are, and come out on the other end much better off. And now Angie's been empowered already because she's taken that power to herself, but now she's been further empowered. Angie, along with the other people who were at that meeting, will be going to more school board meetings. They will be going to and then demanding town hall type settings. And the, and the gentleman promised they would happen. So we're going to hold them accountable to that. So like always, and even at the school board level, don't worry about your safety, don't worry about your personal wellbeing, fight for liberty and freedom and your constitutional rights. Until next time, six temper, tyrannous.